Regular meeting Monday, November 2nd, 2015 at 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of the agenda.
I need to add, "I" land kit purchase. And I handed everyone the information that came in late today.
What is it?
Land kit purchase.
L-A-N-D? L-A-N-Kit.
Land kit purchase, letter "I". Also, I have a note for removing 20D, as is seeing company continuing disclosure proposal. I believe that was taken care of. Any other additions or deletions, please?
Are we leaving healthcare on there and just table it for next month, or?
Nick, we don't want to remove it because then it wouldn't be out next month. So when we get to it, probably table it.
Any other additions or deletions?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, November 2nd, 2015 with the removal of 20D and the addition of 20I land kit purchase.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments. Approval of minutes 10:5, 2015.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as printed for 10:5, 15. Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Want to get any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Sheriff's report.
Does everybody have a copy of the media crime report? Just for the public's knowledge, 44-year-old Algonquin man has been charged with surreptitiously photographing women at the Lennox Township Myers store. I don't know if any of you have seen the news tonight, but it was one of the stories on the news. So just, even in places like Myers, be aware of things that could happen. Also, I talked to the captain over there today. Do not, I can't remember his last name. Do you remember? He's one of their media captains. The problem with getting our reports is they have the new system in place now and it's not interfacing with the old system. So he assures me they're going to get that straightened out and start sending them again. But he just asked me to be patient because I asked him, "We need an update. This has been going on for quite some time." It's a software issue is what he's telling me. So hopefully they'll have the bugs worked out of that soon so they can compare this year's time to last year's time and see the statistical information. That's all I have for that. Yeah, because even if they, if they could send us like last month's, this month's, at least we'd have something to look at. You know, if they're behind, that's understandable, but that would be nice to have. They're having trouble with it and that's one thing that I, I told them we needed, so.
Fire department report.
Proceed and file, please.
Thank you, chief. EMS report.
I just sent a couple of hours ago as we wrapped it up. The month was just over the weekend and city was receiving files.
Thank you, sir. DPW report.
Proceed and file, please.
Thank you. Co-inforcement report.
The control form sent unfiled in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Suspect department report. Any questions? Moving on. Engineers report, Mr. Safe.
I was told not to say about two words.
Thank you, sir.
Three words.
Library report. Lennox Township Library will be closed Wednesday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. The library will close Wednesday, November 25th at 5:00 PM and remain closed through Friday, November 27th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Regular, regular business hours will be observed on Saturday, November 28th. Hula Hoop Mondays is still open, slots for exercise enthusiasts. This program will be held on Mondays in November from 5:30 to 7:30. Join the Lennox Township Library in welcoming back McComb County Sheriff Anthony Wickersham. He will be demonstrating personal defense techniques and discussing personal safety strategies. Sheriff Wickersham will be at the library on Tuesday, November 17th from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. Anna, the owner of Donuts Delights, will be demonstrating different and creative techniques for decorating cupcakes that are used by professional bakers. This event will be held Saturday, November 21st at 1:00 PM. Beginning October 12th, 2015, the library will be offering free tutoring. Tutors will be available on Mondays, Tuesdays from 4:30 to 6:30 and on Friday mornings. Please bring what you need, including your textbook. Thank you. Senior center report. Don't hail one. Supervisors report. Once again, I'd like to invite everyone to the New Haven Lennox Township 7 Annual Community Dinner. It's open to everyone Friday, November 20th, 2015, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the New Haven High School at the cafeteria. And if anybody would like to volunteer for it, please give the supervisor's office a call. Be happy to have you. Treasurer report.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion?
Under fire district checking account, is there supposed to be a zero or is it decimal or a point? And it's just a...
In the checking, yeah, I think there's supposed to be a zero there.
A zero there, yeah?
Yep.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, we had support by trustee Churchy.
No, I made a motion.
Support by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Orders and bills.
The only question I had on was, and probably Sir Mitt would answer this, on some of the bills for Huron Consultants, are those like reimbursed by the companies that are done? Are they 100% reimbursed through them?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a commercial project, it should be reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you.
Numerous bills are going to be added to the list and I'm just going to run through the banners real quick. BSA, support frontier, two for Centas, the life insurance, the high-tech monthly, the DEQ, Snider Rec. And there was a correction on waste management. So the new total is $199,214.06.
$199,214.06. Thank you. To make a motion to approve the bills for $199,214.06.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any questions? Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Boyd?
Aye.
Churchy?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trumley?
Aye. Motion passes. Trustees report, trustee Churchy, please.
Couple of things. First, I want to, the planning, the representative of the planning commission, I'd like to thank the majority of the board for letting us move forward with the plan, work on the master plan where we started already looking at the wetlands ordinance. Our goal in that is to make sure not one section of the township is completely wetlands. We're coming up with a percentage amount and looking at each section to say, okay, you can only have so much percentage. So that some people don't get all swamp land and some people don't have anything. The other thing is, I don't know if it's just sponsored by Walmart. I heard about it through a commercial, but it seems that they're asking that if everyone can put a green light bulb out in one-year fixtures, it's to honor the veterans. I guess it's from now until Veterans Day. So if you can, be great. They do have them at the store. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd.
The only thing I have is, I mentioned it to the board, I didn't put it out there after that. Just reminding the public that we are looking for someone for cable commission. On the law, we're able to do it, so I had to step down. So we have two positions open for that. So if anybody's interested in being on the cable commission, it's a one-time-a-month meeting and then you can get involved with filming and stuff if you want with the cable commission also. So if anybody's interested, I would send supervisor's office.
Keith?
Yes, please. Where to go and go through them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk's report.
Tomorrow, we have an election for the Hermia schools village vote and so we'll be here for that. The website is up and running. It's going to be a work in progress as we slowly add all the forms and stuff, but check it out, it's pretty good. And the Lennox Township, New Haven Historical Society is having their annual tea in November, so look for the flyers to come out on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and file our reports. Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. 19A, unfinished business, McComb area communities for regional opportunities, MACRO membership request. Attorney Chopper.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This is, as you mentioned, the McComb area communities for regional opportunities. It's an organization, they call it MACRO, M-A-C-R-O. And it is an organization that, from what I understand at this point, is a group of representatives from communities across McComb County who get together for meetings to discuss opportunities for possibly engaging in shared services, disseminating information and sharing experiences to help in the operation of government across the county. They have provided a sample agreement that their communities enter into, which I was asked to, that their participants enter into, which I was asked to review. Provided township board with a review letter of that agreement. One of the key provisions, of course, is that it allows the township to withdraw at any time. Meaning township can get out, just like it says, at any time that it wants. So if at any time MACRO heads in a direction that is not conducive or consistent with where the township is or wants to be, it can decide to discontinue its participation. There are provisions in there that allow for MACRO to exercise powers beyond just talking and disseminating information and talking about opportunities for shared services, but to also seek grants potentially and other things of that nature. But it also has provisions that says it can't bind any one of its communities to any contracts or agreements by its actions or the actions of its representatives. So any contracts that would bind the township or any arrangements that would bind the township anyway, we'd have to come back to the township board for approval and that is in the agreement. It's also in the sample resolution that they provided. And if the township board is, I know this was on your agenda previously, you talked about it and it was, you know, you were looking at it subject to my review of the agreement. I don't have any legal issues or problems with the agreement that's been prepared. It would be the same agreement that the other communities have developed and entered into. And so from a legal standpoint, I have no objections or problems with the agreement. If you want to proceed forward, the way to do so would be to adopt the sample resolution that they provided and which would include you designating two of your members or two representatives from the township staff to attend the meetings as part of that resolution. So that should be reflected in your motion along with authority for the supervisor to enter into the agreement.
Thank you.
I do, yes.
It's part of the materials, yes. And this is at zero cost, too.
Steve, the one, one thing I remember, I don't know if I remember reading it or if it was, it was said, was that one of the expenditures that might come up is if there was something that they needed to hire a lawyer for and then it would be divided up among the communities. That would be something that they would have to come back to each individual board and get it approved by the board. They couldn't just do it.
Yes, if they're going to enter into a contract that's going to bind them to spend money on that. But if they have donations or grants that they receive that provides funding from other sources, then under the agreement, they could proceed using those funds. And they are also required to keep records of their funding and how they use it. So that would be maybe available as well to the township. But yeah, before any money is spent on such a lawyer by the township, we'd have to come back and get the township's board's approval.
And you have in, that it's section four of the agreement, there was a broader and more extensive powers, so it's big. Do you remember, do you recall what that, because I'm just curious more than anything. It says that they can may seek to exercise some of their additional powers granted to it under the agreement? Do you remember?
Yes, those are some of the things I was talking about. They have the power to seek grants, to accept donations and contributions. They do have the power to enter into contracts, but if those, but it also says if those contracts are going to bind any community to monetary obligations, they have to get approval. And it specifically says that they can't do any bonding, so they can't obligate the township under a bond. So it's both powers and restrictions in that section four.
Okay.
No, I, I think if the board wants to make a motion, if you're in favor of this motion approving the resolution presented with designating two individuals and authorizing the supervisor to sign the agreement, having those three things in a motion. Approving the resolution, identifying the two individuals and authorizing the supervisor to sign the agreement. Those three things in a motion would take care of it.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution. We designate supervisor Trumley and I'm going to say trustee Boyd as the rubs.
And authorizing the supervisor to sign.
And the, authorizing the supervisor to sign.
Support. Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion?
Now, the, the two, Steve, that are assigned, those are the two voting members?
No, only one vote is cast.
Right, but whoever's there, either one. So if I went and Mr. Trumley didn't, I would be able to vote for the township.
That is correct, yes.
Chris, I only thought about you because working at Newchick, I'm trying to make the meetings.
No problem.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Employee healthcare renewal.
I'll make a motion to table employee healthcare renewal to the December meeting.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions?
Yeah, I thought we have a 45-day, if we wait till December, are we going to mess up our 45-day?
Deputy supervisor, please.
I would think that's only if we decide to change it.
Thank you. It's all right.
Good evening. That would be if we weren't making any changes. This is coming right from half. They're not ready to make the rates. Available to any of their clients. So it's not our fault, it's all on them.
So they're not going to hold us?
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, they can't, because the email that you sent was from them today.
And I asked Mike that. I says, "You got to give me something in writing to give the board because I'm not going to come up here and say all that and then not have anything to back me up." So it's coming from, from half. Nothing we can do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Identify the motion, I believe, already, correct? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number 20, new business. Lennox Township Fire Department, new hiring. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Last week, I sent the board a letter, a cover letter by email, and then I gave you a hard copy as well as two packets of information on applicants. Received applications for two separate positions within the fire department. One, that being for probationary firefighter for Mr. Brian Dieter. Brian's right here. And then also a second application from Sue Baggins for the position, the open position of dispatcher. I informed the board several months ago, our previous dispatcher left. We have been unable to fill that position. So this kind of worked out really well. We've done all the testing and interviewing at the fire department level as far as Brian's concerned and held an extensive interview with Sue as far as the dispatching position is concerned. If the board approves the two of them for hire tonight, then Brian would be subject to going through the next two tests, which would be physical agility testing at the fire department as well as a physical, a formal firefighter physical with our, our health provider. So if there are any questions, I'm hoping, open to take them. I included all their information in the packets that I delivered to you last week. So Sue comes to us as a retired sergeant from the Harrison Township Fire Department. Prior to that, she worked for the Redford Township Fire Department or City of Redford Fire Department as well as several EMS agencies. Brian just graduated from the fire academy at McComb last spring, finished in the top 5% of his class. And I asked them both to arrive, come in here tonight in case, in the event that you had any questions for them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No questions. I just want to say, I think we're very lucky to have both of you. I'm sorry I didn't meet you out there, Sue. I didn't realize that's who you were, but the, both your applications are really impressive. And Brian, I think you're going to learn a lot and really take good advantage of our program. You're with a good group of people. And Sue, I know you're going to be right there besides cracking the whip on those guys because you're not going to let them get away with anything. So welcome to both of you, really impressed. Thank you.
And for a dispatcher, that's a lot of good certificates. That's impressive, it's quite the package. Usually for that job, we get like two pieces of paper.
We use the ream on this one.
No, I agree with Karen, welcome. I was on the fire department 10 years myself and I know what you got out of you, especially you taking your physical agility test and all that. It is quite the test, but again, welcome to both of you.
And my question is actually for Denny. And this is just so that it's in the minutes so that we have a going forward. We talked before, the dispatcher was at 15?
$15.
Okay, and I already know that...
Brian starts at starting wage.
He starts at the starting wage, but I just wanted that in the minutes before.
That's correct. So at this time, I'd ask, formally request approval to hire these two individuals as employees of the fire department.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Sue Baggins, correct? As dispatcher and Brian Dieter? Not even close, eh?
Neither.
Neither, okay. As probationary firefighter.
Support. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Lennox Library snow rule request.
Had for the past four years, that was him. Thank you very much.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing him with us.
You'll love him.
We might not love him.
Yeah, always do that when I come up there.
I apologize, I didn't, I didn't realize you'd need me to speak on this. The letter pretty much speaks for itself, really. Library is asking again for us to...
Do you have a comment to add?
No.
Is the cost okay or?
I did have...
Is it a partial, a little light raise or?
I did ask Mrs. O to look up. In the last two years, we've charged them 300, which, you know, was fair considering the last couple winters. Every forecast I've seen so far, we should have a lot milder winter this year, so, you know, kind of give and take. So at this time, I don't see any reason to adjust that. And it's, in the past, you know, we make sure we get our critical sites done first, but we really try to accommodate them and get them done by their opening time.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we allow the DPW to provide snow memorial service for the Lennox Township Library as in the past at a cost of $300.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions, discussion?
Cam, do we still do brass there for press?
No.
I didn't think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Stonehouse lease agreement.
Look at it, Steve. Come on. Yeah, I know, he's not being nice. Hello.
Good evening. You would like to?
He's coming all his way. Thanks. Really did. I even groaned.
You'd like to? Would you like to continue the lease?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Any questions? Attorney Chopper.
Before any questions, I was provided a copy of this last week. Asked to take a look at it. I did take a quick look at it. I know this is the same lease it's been entered into for a number of years, but I did notice, well, there's a few typos in it that I think could help and a couple clarifications of things that I don't think are covered perhaps through the years. Things have changed or whatnot, so I'd like to provide those before to you, Mr. Supervisor, before this gets signed.
Okay.
And I will highlight them so that they stick out and you can see what they are before you sign.
That would be fine.
And there's nothing major changing?
Nothing major, no.
Any questions?
Cam, do we inspect the property all the way in there once a year or anything like that to see what needs to be done or might be coming up?
Leaky faucets? Just a leaky faucet, that's it, in 10 years, basically, that and a light. Yeah.
Yeah, the last time it, you know, like a full inspection was done was right when, prior to them moving in. The only other time I'm really only in the residence is if there's a minor repair that needs to be done. And like you said, it's been very minor over the years. The only thing that really had, a couple of doors.
Yep.
We had problems with some exterior locks. But that's about it.
But any of you are welcome to come over and look at it. It looks like the day I moved in, too.
I can tell you, you keep the outside very nice. I've had no issues with my department with them. Angie, how long have you guys been there?
This'll be our 10th year. I know, where did time go, right?
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion that we renew the lease of the Stone House to Timothy and Angelo Lanat at the present amount charged, and authorize the supervisor to charge, to sign the contract once it's reviewed with the attorney.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer An Doctor. Any other questions or discussion?
Besides, Tim and I are empty nesters as of next weekend, so all the kids are all gone. Just Tim and I now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And you'd be surprised how fast them empty nesters came back.
Yes.
Sent us rug contract.
Okay. I think everybody kind of remembers back a few months ago, we had a situation where we had the missing rug mat that we'd been being charged. They have cleaned for quite a few years since we moved over here, and we found out it was in the other building. I gave all of the board members a copy of this letter. We've been charged for the mat. Long story short, they came in, they talked with us, we got a $500 credit that they gave us, issued us, and it was used up in June of this year. We had finished it. I made a copy of the latest bill for everybody. There's two mats that we're having cleaned once a month, and they're charging us a service charge of almost $22, which is more than what we are charging for the cleaning. I think we could probably buy some mats and have our cleaning people vacuum them, and save ourselves $60 a month for this. And to get out of the contract, we have to do it... What do we say, 60 days?
It has to be 60 days before the contract expires, so your notice...
February of '16 is when we'd be tied into another, tighter contract.
Yes, but you would have to give the notice by December 7 of this year, or you'd get tied into another five years.
So what I'm asking is, I'm asking the board to give me the direction. Steve has given me a letter, told me how to, you know, way back, told me how to do this, so that we don't get tied into another five years.
I agree with you on this, absolutely.
And I'm pretty sure our cleaning people are probably already cleaning them anyway.
Yeah, and they're probably vacuuming them every week.
And I can come in and shampoo them if they get the upper deck. I was forced to buy a new rug shampoo.
How many Staples sell contracts like that? I mean, there's plenty of places.
Yeah, Jeanette and I have been looking into different... We could buy ourselves a couple of rugs, and we'd be fine. Definitely, for the amount of money that we're, you know, getting tied into this. And they can, the thing is, in the contract, when Steve checked into it, because I said, geez, if at one time it was like a very small service charge, and it keeps going up and up and up, they don't have to let us know in that contract. And the ones we're tied into that, they didn't have to let us know that they're upping it. So the service charge is more than what they're charging to clean the rug.
Your motion, please.
I'll make the motion that we authorize Treasurer An Doctor to break the contract with sent us on the two mats. And then research purchasing what is needed.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Point and Pay LLC e-payment services agreement.
As many of you know, we have been looking into being able to take payment via credit card for quite a few years. This is a service that Point and Pay does all of it for, and it's at no charge to the township. They charge a fee to the resident to utilize the service, and so we don't have to worry about covering the credit card fees to, you know, offer this to everyone. And it would be, they could, anything that today they come in and pay the township for, they could pay for it by a credit card.
And they can also do it online.
And they can do it online. They can actually go through our website and pay their taxes. With this, once it's set up, they could pay their taxes on our website. They could pay their water bill. Set up for permits, they could set up to see the planner.
Taxes.
Yep.
My question on the taxes and even water bills, what if there's a penalty? If they're paying, how do we know they're paying the right amount?
This particular company is integrated with BSNA, and that's why we chose this one over some of the other ones that were out there. It actually is integrated into the BSNA system, so they wouldn't be able to... Or they might be able to, but it would show that they still owe.
The only thing that worried me, and I talked to Jody about it, and it still worries me some, is the fee. We talked quite a bit about it, Jody and I, and it really isn't convenient, but one example we use is like $2,000 in taxes. If they're paying a $2,000 tax bill, their fee is $60 to pay using it. And that's, and my only worry with that is people don't realize that. If they don't realize it, they pay it, they click all the buttons to take care of it, and then they get their credit card bill, and all of a sudden, they pay an extra $60 on their taxes, or whatever. And that worries me, because it's, like you said, it isn't going to happen. Somebody's going to do it, and they're going to come up here screaming and hollering. But it is, I mean, it's on there. It's plain, it's clear, but a lot of people don't understand that. You get people that aren't real computer savvy, and they don't realize it. So I just want to throw out there, that it is a concern mine. I think it's a great thing, I think it's definitely needed. It's just that fee that worries me a little bit.
And a couple of things. If someone did have a complaint about the fee, they wouldn't come to us, they'd have to go to Point and Pay.
Right. After they came up here and complained.
We would have to point them towards them. And the other thing is, it's convenience. They can choose to use it, they can choose not to. But also, you know, when times are tough, and it's between not paying their taxes and putting it on their credit card bill, there may be people that would pay the $60 to do that. So we're giving them the option. They wouldn't have to, but they could.
No, this is only if they pay like online, or when you come in here and give us a credit card.
Yep, there's a case, so they'll be able to come in here and do it here.
And be able to honor and... So then you could tell them there is...
If they're literally coming in here, yes.
And everybody does that, because I know there's a couple of bills, like I just paid a car payment. They went, "Oh yeah, by the way, they're just setting you to be charged." So I could have either said, "Oh, no, never mind," or whatever.
No, they do take, they also take debit cards, so it's not, you know, limited just to credit cards. They do the debit, they also, there is no minimum. I mean, they could actually charge a buck if they wanted to.
Or it'll cost them $1.50.
Right, it costs them $2.50 to charge $1. But the biggest thing is, this takes it all off of us. We get a report. We see that, we can go in online and see that the payment being made, and it gives the residents that option.
So they charge a percentage of what the amount is, or...
3%.
3, thanks.
And that's a $2 minimum. Any other questions?
And if nobody has questions, Steve is...
Attorney Joppa.
Yes, I just wanted to report to the board that in order to implement this type of payment system, the township is required by state law to have a policy resolution in place, which if the board wants to proceed forward, we would have to put those together, come back to your next meeting, and before this is put online and implemented, those would have to be adopted. And so we would need that as part of the contract as well, which I'll take care of as part of the contract review. But I wanted you to be aware that if you want to proceed, there is another step in the process where you have to put some things into place to make it happen, according to state law.
Now, if we approve this part of it tonight, we can get it started. And there's a six-week setup period for them to get everything in place. If we do this tonight, that would be about the middle of December. So we would have the resolutions ready for the December meeting, and we could possibly go online in the middle of December, just before the Christmas break.
We could pass the resolution, does it, anything have to go on papers for that? That we passed a resolution for that? I mean, is there any complication that has to be made?
No, that's not required.
I just, for timeline, I don't think...
Yes, no.
If we wait for the whole thing until December, then we're looking at not being able to offer it for that end-of-the-year crunch, when everybody wants to pay their taxes before the end of the year. So that's the only reason we want to move forward with it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Point and Pay to be activated after Attorney Joppa gets back with the proper paperwork at the December meeting.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Letter G, Township Office Hours During Holiday Season.
For the last few years, we've closed between Christmas and New Year, so that's what this is alluding to.
I didn't have a problem doing that last year. I don't know if anybody else would like to speak to it, but...
The 24th and the 31st are already holidays that would be closed, so we're looking at closing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the 28th through the 30th, up above what's already slated.
And people may ask, because that's tax, like Jody said, that's tax crunch time. Legally, someone has to be available to take taxes of those last few days. But I have First State Bank doing it. If you have a financial institution that people know, and it's printed right on our tax bill, that they could go there to pay it, then I'm not obligated legally to be here, physically in the office. If I didn't have that, then yes, I would have to be here to...
And anyone that uses the drop box when we come back to work, it's still post-dated as, or not post-dated?
Right, we would backdate it, so that they were on time.
Are employees going to be required to use vacation time?
If they have it, they usually use it. If they don't have it, they're aware of that. You know, there's a couple that probably won't have enough vacation time, but they're aware of it, and it would be without pay.
And they don't have a problem not getting paid for those days? They're good with us being closed?
The one that I talked to didn't have a problem with it.
It worries me, because there's still business out there. There's still people that need to come here. I said this last year, too. You know, it worries me, because we are supposed to be open. We are a business. But I understand a lot to be closed those times. Be with family, I do understand that.
That's the biggest thing. I think it is a nice thing, and I think most of the... I haven't heard any employees say, "Oh my God, I can't do this."
Is there a way to set up like an emergency number? On our, you know, if they call the township?
I think we did that, definitely.
I thought we put a sign up before, but I don't know if we did something over the phone.
I think there's usually been something on the door, and we could put something on the website as well.
Or in the newspaper, in the voice, we could put in there. Put in there, but didn't we have something that...
Yes, we've had on the front, or the main entrance, a sign with an alternate number, which was my cell number, because I have two residents regularly calling me now on my cell when they have a trash issue. But yeah, that's what we've done in the past.
Same store.
And the new website actually has, for those that want to sign up for it, you get notification. I actually got a notification today that the agenda was ready for this meeting on my cellphone. And so we could push that out as well, but everybody has to go out to the website and sign up for that.
Any other questions? Did we put it in the paper last year? Did we put it in the paper last year?
I think we did.
I don't think we did.
We put it in the paper.
If it's posted even within the next, you know, month?
Well, we could even do something to put in my tax bills. We've done other, you know, things.
And that would make me feel a lot better.
And we could put some kind of different colored paper in there stating that we are going to be closed, but, you know, you can do it such-and-such at the bank.
Yeah, if we got time to do that, I like that idea. All right, if that's the case, then I'll make a motion to close the offices December 28th, 29th, and 30th for the holidays, along with sending out notices with the tax bills and posting an alternate phone number on the doors and on the tax bills.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
Do you want a phone number on the tax bills, or...
Well, at least on the front door.
On the door, yeah.
Who's going to, who's phone number? Do you want to do it, Jeanette?
No problem.
Okay.
Are you back open on the floor?
I think that's fourth, I guess.
Yep.
The fourth, it'll be on the day. I think that's board meeting.
I'm sorry, did we do a motion on that?
Chris did. It was Jody, yeah.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Deputy Supervisor, do you have a question?
I'm sorry, one question is, we come back on the January 4th, which is a board night. So that means we're going to have to get everything for the agenda extra early? And then have it posted before we leave for Christmas break?
Yes.
Okay.
And then due to the circumstances, I do think if there's something that needs to be added, we still should add it. If it's a problem or there's not enough information, then we'll deal with it accordingly. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you. 2016 Meeting Schedule.
Karen, normally this goes to the planning commission prior to this. If you want to do that this month, and then this come back on next month? Or if you're okay with it?
Doesn't look like it's going to fall around a holiday.
We are slated to start the meetings earlier for the board in August and November, because those are both very big elections.
If anybody would like to do the meeting earlier in November, it's fine by me, too.
Oh, it is, it's November, August and November.
Do you know when, like Easter is? Is it March or April next?
Uh, March 27th. Stone on the bottom.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, I see.
I don't see that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look if there'd be anything conflicting that, you know, maybe the planning commission didn't want to meet on certain days or something.
Everything in the green square is a holiday.
Planning commission meetings look fine. I mean, if there is a problem, we could always change one, but the way it's printed, it looks, looks fine, you know, because the only one that's moved up is December, and that kind of goes without saying, we don't want to meet December 26th. May, yeah, it's maybe a week ahead anyway.
Yeah, November is moved up as well, Karen. The ones that are highlighted.
Yep. Oh, for the Thanksgiving and stuff. Now, why did we move, why is that? Why is that one moved up?
I just thought it would be better before the holiday rather than after the holiday. Everybody would be available more.
Okay, yeah, like I said, if, if, if nobody, if somebody disagrees with that, we can always change it, but I'm sure it's going to be.
Many more people consider the day after Thanksgiving a holiday too, so.
Either way, it's after November 15th.
If the planning commission is okay with it, I'll make a motion to approve the calendar year 2016 meetings as presented.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchie. Any other questions, discussion?
If you could print up something, Jody, or some, show them just before our meeting and then I'll, that way we officially approve it at our planning commission meeting.
Okay.
So, thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Letter I, land kit purchase.
Last Thursday, they came to upload the new software for the doors and the key fobs and stuff into the new server. When they did that, they found that this gizmo, which is a land kit from the old server, is incompatible with the new server and so we need to upgrade it as well. This is still within the budgeted amount for the server upgrade and I'm hoping this is the last of the surprise spending on the upgrade, but you never know.
Any other questions?
When this is completed, the old server will be decommissioned and taken out of here. This is the last piece that is still on the old server. At a cost of $1,089.
Any other questions?
Was the thing corrected at the bottom of that page? Or it said that system was inoperable there?
Oh, this past weekend, the system actually was inoperable and we're not exactly sure why, but everything started pointing to the old server instead of the new and that's why the system was down. I found this out when I was here on Saturday. Made a call to High Tech to get him in here first thing this morning. As I was telling Cam earlier, the building is either haunted or there's some kind of electrical thing going on as well. The other night, every light in the building came on at about 8 o'clock. And so I don't know if the server thing was due to some electric, electrical thing or if there was something else.
No, well, maybe, because, I mean, if there's an electrical problem, we don't want someone going through this brand new server. Is there protection for that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's highly protected down there.
Okay.
It's a ghost. Because we used to have one too there.
Well, let's hope, because that's cheaper.
We get a call.
So that's why I just thought I'd put that in on the bottom about what the issue was this past weekend.
And we're, we're still well under what you budgeted.
Absolutely. Yeah, we budgeted 25 and I think we might be pushing the 20,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the land kit upgrade at the cost of $1,089.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer and doctor. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Public comment? Any public comments at this time? No public comments. Make a motion to go into closed session at 20, I'm sorry, we're in military time, 8:25. Motion by trustee Boyd. Do we have to, what, we're going in for?
You have to state.
I'm sorry.
Yes, and it's a roll call.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, discuss pending litigation. Gala and Patchnick. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchie. Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Boyd?
Aye.
Churchie?
Aye.
Hottenhocker?
Aye.
Key?
Aye.
Trauma?
Aye. Motion passes. Closed session, 8:25.
I make a motion that we go return to open session at 9:07.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Back in open session.
I make a motion to adjourn at 9:08.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, immediately adjourned.